It is two o'clock and this meeting will come to order. First thing is roll call. All of our trustees are here, except for trustee Robinson, who let me know in advance that she could not make it. Our attorney will be here later. Our directors, assistant director, and business manager are here. So next we will have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America, and to the republic of our citizens. One nation, under God, in universal, liberty, and justice for all.
Right, next we will have public comments and our first person is Karen Johnston.
Good afternoon. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I want to thank you for accurately representing the values of your constituents by properly relocating books from the children's section of the library with sexually explicit content and content which violates the values of your constituents to sections of the library which would require parental supervision. I realize a small minority using misplaced arguments that children have a right to such content are very vocal in their opposition to this action. I believe what needs to be emphasized here is the fact that parents have first rights in the education of their children, and that includes the values imparted to those children. Libraries, schools, the government, and vocal minorities have absolutely no right to override parental authority. Any effort by any of those entities to quell or negate the voices of parents is an abomination to our constitutional republic and our democratic principles. Tyranny dictates, democracy represents. Voters made a clear choice when the individuals on this board were elected. I commend this board for representing the wishes of the people. Abraham Lincoln once said, "You can fool some of the people all of the time and all of the people some of the time, but you can't fool all of the people all the time." I believe we are experiencing in America a counter-revolution. We, the people, have come to grips with the fact that we have been bullied and deceived by factions of aggressive, dictating vocal minorities who seek to undermine our cherished Christian values, common sense, and legitimate valid science. It is my hope that by the grace of God, the American people will continue to revolt against what has been and instead support return to an environment which reinstates that which provides faith, a safe, nurturing environment to our children. An environment which fosters health, spirituality, physically, emotionally, and psychologically. I am thankful for the actions of this board which contribute to this endeavor. And it's a wonderful thing to see a group of people who are paid by the people who represent the people. Thank you.
Right, next we have Josiah Mannion.
Hello, Josiah Mannion. Eaton is my home library. Afternoon, y'all. Taking a beating in the press lately, huh? And that can't be fun. By that I mean illegitimate press. It's a professional term, this with like training and education and professional code of conduct and ethics to follow, not like whatever that is. I would like to begin here by making an observation that I feel like y'all have actually correctly applied the Miller test to the Bible in order to retain it in its current location in the library, my own personal misgivings about the duty classification system notwithstanding. It shows me that y'all are perfectly capable of taking a work and evaluating its merit as a whole despite the clear presence of descriptive passages of sexuality and violence that taken separately could certainly be considered by some as having purry and peel. So here's the thing. I think, odd as this may sound, coming from me, I think y'all need to have a little more faith. Kind of faith that I think your God has in us humans, granting us free will, trusting that we will use it. I think y'all need to pass on a little of that faith and the ability of parents to provide their own safety rails around their exploration of their kids' and teens' worlds, knowing that at some point those kids got to go out there in the world on their own. I face that kids and teens by and large provide their own safety rails to seeking out the information and fiction that they need in order to navigate and explore the world from within the relative safety of books. The by and large, they don't tend to seek out the worlds that are beyond their own capacity to grasp. A little faith in your own community to guide its own world without, as the previous speaker said, authoritarian oversight and bureaucratic surveillance from a library or any other public government entity. Have some faith in the due process systems that with a lot of hard work y'all have already put in place. I personally may not think it's a great system, and apparently y'all at least in some ways agree, having responded to Mariana Cochran's calls to jump with, "Oh, have I? We measure that jump for you." And gone well outside the established norms and processes to further censor books. Look at y'all, the kids are all right. These teens need us to listen to them far more than they need our demeaning rules and restrictions and our lack of respect for their autonomy and their ability to shape their worlds in ways that we can't even predict, much less control. It's a vain attempt. Together, we can grant our whole community, these adults, parents, children, teens, and young adults, that grace. Thank you.
All right, next we have Mariana Cochran.
Good afternoon. How joyful it has been since we were gathered here last. Our country is finally moving in the right direction again, and although there is copious pain associated with ripping off our national Band-Aids, it's a necessary and worthwhile step toward recovery and healing. And so it is with CLN. Oh, the contention and sometimes acrimony as a result of something as fundamental as not exposing kids to sexually explicit material. It didn't have to be contentious, but our conservative board majority persevered nonetheless. And they had the foresight to see the talent and capability in our new director, Martin Walters. Sir, I watched the video of yesterday's CIN meeting and want to take several moments to give you kudos regarding how you conducted yourself in that crucible, I mean, meeting. You were calm and ultra-professional in the face of an hour of a barrage of questions, accusations, and blatant entrenchment. One vocal attendee agitator stated, quote, "CLN has worked effectively for 41 years until CLN's policy change," unquote. Oh, the horror of having to consider changes after four decades of status quo. Director Walters, during that meeting, you were steadfast and rightly unapologetic regarding CLN's compliance with the law. On multiple occasions, you demonstrated your clarity of purpose vis-à-vis determining how to accommodate CLN's revised policy, and more than once, you appropriately yet respectfully pointed out the difference between policy and procedure, what your cohorts in that meeting should have clearly understood but did not. I also admired your candor when you transparently explained that processes were still being worked out during this early stage of adoption so that every question doesn't have an answer at this time. Though the video of the meeting only provides a very annotated view of the attendees, it was obvious that the other meeting attendees were quite agitated with CLN's policy revisions regarding minor access, and they didn't hide their aggravation. But you were the consummate professional by patiently and thoughtfully responding to each of their many questions and accusations. Having worked my entire career in the private sector and mostly in the corporate world, change and progress is the life's blood of continued relevancy for employees and their organizations. Digging in one's heels and being unwilling to at least explore how to evolve after 41 years is not asking too much of anyone. In fact, adaptability is a high priority performance measure for employees to demonstrate their value to an organization. So I'm sorry that you're having to deal with this intractability, but I'm grateful for your perseverance in the face of it. Crucibles provide the opportunity for the strong to become stronger. We're seeing that evidence in our president, and I see it in you, Director Walters. Thank you.
All right, next we have Teresa Burkett.
I'm Teresa Burkett. I'm a resident in Post Falls, and I'm president of the Library Alliance of North Idaho. And I'm here to speak on behalf of all our members. First, I want to extend my gratitude to Mr. Hanley and Ms. Odison for attending the screening of "Band Together." I trust you witnessed firsthand how censorship and book bans directly impact our youth, restricting their access type to diverse perspectives and important conversations. Mr. Plasse, I must emphasize that censoring books based on their subject matter is not only ethically wrong, but also legally precarious. Content-based discrimination is a violation of First Amendment principles and would expose this library system to costly legal challenges. When we selectively remove books because they address topics such as LTETQ plus history, racial injustice, or police brutality, we are not protecting children. We are denying them the opportunity to engage with the realities of the world they live in. The books I recently read, one on the history of pride for children, another about black teenager who witnesses police brutality, and one on, and the third highlighting teenage experiences with racism, they're all on a book ban list, are not well-written, are just well-written. They are deeply meaningful. They provide perspectives that help young readers develop empathy, critical thinking, and a better understanding of society. Why would anyone want to suppress these stories? Last month, there was discussion of so-called culture wars. Let's clarify who actually is waging them. It is not woke liberals advocating for book bans. It is far-right extremists imposing your ideology on public institutions. Ironically, many of these same individuals, including you, Mr. Plasse, champion the Republican Party's stance against government overreach in private lives. Yet by pushing censorship, you are contradicting your own values by demanding government control over what children read. We can all agree on the principles of free speech and religious freedom. However, imposing one group's moral standards on a public library is the very definition of government overreach. Libraries should remain neutral spaces where all perspectives are accessible rather than being hijacked by political agendas. A truly neutral approach means that no single ideology dictates what knowledge is for children. Ms. Odison, I would like to remind you that the library maintains a strict policy against any form of pornography. If such material were to be discovered, I trust you would not hesitate to notify Sheriff Norris, as we all share the responsibility of keeping our communities safe and respectful.
All right, next we have Michelle Lippert.
Good afternoon. My name's Michelle Lippert. I'm a resident of Post Falls. How did we reach this point? When did we become afraid of the written word? The fear-mongering around books is not only baseless, but it's also dangerous. There's no credible evidence that reading about same-sex relationships makes children gay, just as reading about racism does not create race. Similarly, no research supports the ideas that books discussing drug use lead to increased drug abuse among readers. Books provide knowledge, not indoctrination. If anything, they equip young minds with critical thinking skills, awareness, and resilience to navigate complex issues. Mr. Abercetti, your statement at the July 16th board meeting, I quote, "I can't believe that we are okay with parents taking direction under the guise of knowing what's best for their children," end quote, was not only offensive but fundamentally anti-democratic. Your words suggest that government officials, rather than parents, should dictate children's access to literature. That stands in direct contradiction to Idaho law. State statute 321010, section 3 explicitly upholds parental rights. I quote, "The interests of the parents include the high duty and right to nurture and direct their children's destiny, including their upbringing and education." Banning books removes parental choice entirely. Instead of allowing families to decide what aligns with their values, a small group is imposing its judgment on an entire community. This is not about protecting children. This is about controlling them. Children do not need protection from books. They need protection from real dangers, predators, gun violence, and criminal activity. Literature is not the enemy. In fact, studies have repeatedly shown that reading fosters empathy, improves cognitive development, and helps young people process the world around them. We want to raise informed, thoughtful citizens. We must encourage reading, not restrict it. The role of this board is to manage budgets and oversee the employment of the library director, not to impose ideological restrictions on public resources. It is not your job to dictate morality or decide which viewpoints are acceptable. That is a personal decision for parents and families. I urge you to respect your actual duties and allow parents, educators, and librarians to fulfill.
Next we have Naomi Stone.
Good afternoon. My name is Naomi. I recently moved to the Liberty Lake area and used the CIN branch there, but I was a Hayden resident for most of my life, and up until last week, I held the position of circulation supervisor at the Hayden branch of the Community Library Network. I'm also on the steering committee for the Library Alliance of North Idaho. Because of my work schedule, I haven't had the opportunity to address you directly, but I have followed the activities of this board closely for almost three years, and I watch most of your meetings online if I can't attend in person. I have firsthand knowledge of how our library is operating, and I'm well-informed regarding library issues. I'm here today to address the matter of the CLN's membership in the Cooperative Information Network. At yesterday's CIN meeting, Director Walters was able to delay this network's expulsion from the consortium. However, the consortium's joint powers agreement calls for 180 days' advance notice for member withdrawal. This means the CIN needs to make a decision within the next month or two if they want the dissolution of the partnership to coincide with the start of the next fiscal year on October 1st. The clock is ticking. At the next CIN meeting on March 19th, the decision will most likely be made, most likely be taken out of your hands, and this network will be kicked out of the consortium unless this board takes immediate and decisive action to reverse the new, more restrictive child card policy. When implemented, the policy will take away parents' rights to choose open access cards for their children and will negatively impact the other libraries in the CIN in violation of its member agreement. The new policy is unnecessary. Your own lawyer advised against it, and it will be costly and time-consuming to implement. With all due respect to this board and its new director, you don't know what you don't know. That was apparent at yesterday's meeting. The consequences of expulsion or withdrawal from the CIN are far-reaching and complex. If you ask longtime staff, they'll tell you that leaving the CIN could be disastrous. To so recklessly risk the end of a partnership that is vital and interwoven to the smooth operation of our libraries is a serious breach of due fiduciary responsibility to taxpayers. It will have far-reaching financial, political, and legal consequences, and it will be incredibly unpopular, incredibly unpopular, and disruptive to the community. I recommend this board take action to reverse the new policy before the next CIN meeting, and if necessary, arrange a special meeting to address this imminent crisis, although it may already be too late. The consortium is a vital asset to this community, and there's no question that our members have benefited immensely from sharing resources with other libraries in the region. I hope that you will take this warning seriously. You cannot say now that you did not know. Please, please do the right thing for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. I am grateful to Almighty God for our freedom and our constitution, and that includes freedom of speech, which, you know, even if it's critical or unpopular. So thank you for taking the time to speak to the board. Next, we will go to the consent agenda. And I just want to say, point of consent agenda is to quickly pass non-controversial items. So anyway, there any corrections? Trustee Allen?
Just a very small one. The heading on the minutes does not say minutes. Says library, page, just says board trustees, regular meaning, probably should say minutes on there. That's my only, I guess my only finding on there, I think.
Trustee Allen?
Go ahead, one more. Page three, very close to the bottom, not the very last paragraph, I'll re-part it. Director, other policies, well, it's bullet number two. Bullet number three, near the end, as this, where it says plus, do not want C, it probably should say paragraph C, because looking at minutes, it wouldn't make much sense to me. I had to think about it twice, so I would think it would have to have that word paragraph added in there. I think it'll make it clearer. Where is it?
Do you guys want that? Okay. Mr. Plasse?
I didn't know anything more on the minutes, but I did have some of the CIN notes. This was the November 20th meeting. Was there, I thought we normally have meetings every month, but was there a, I don't think there was, January meeting? Was there a December meeting? Seems like all of a sudden we go from November to what was just talked about yesterday. Is that normal?
Yeah, there's no December meeting. So we're always, and it's the day before this one, so we're always behind because the approval of minutes. Even the previous month, and then we're the next, I didn't, it's on the Wednesday.
This is three, three months old.
So the January.
We had one in January.
It was December.
Yeah.
You don't get out.
Yeah, so the January minutes were approved yesterday. And then it was on, oh, and the Wednesday, December. It'd be in November, then January, and January was just approved yesterday. It would, it is approved by CIN.
It's by CIN.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I come in?
Yeah.
Trustee Allen?
No, just, so if you understand, I figure it out. Until the CIN meets again the month after the meeting, then they can accept or go through the consent agenda, and then it's available to us. I can see why there's a two-month delay, I guess it is.
Mr. Plasse?
Then I was asked, maybe I've never noticed before, but on the attendance up on the top, what's the difference between the X and the underscore? These Xs, people that didn't attend, or?
Yeah.
There's underscores. I'm guessing the X is a check, those aren't attended, who did, I was there, so the X is probably a check mark for those in attendance, and I mean, I've confirmed the check mark.
And I should have gone back and watched it on the second page of the CLN minutes. Okay, under number seven, the last paragraph there, the second line, it says, "Plasse confirmed that the board is in support of the director's actions to review materials in the collection." Was that supposed to be policy or was it the board?
It's page three. Page three.
Oh, page three. It's under number seven, the last paragraph. A line to the left. That's Plasse confirmed the board is in support of the director's actions. Did you say the board or did you say policy? I thought it was policy.
I believe what I was saying is, the director is doing, the board approves what he's doing because it's in the policy, and I think I read a section out of the policy saying that the library staff is supposed to do this. So it. I was referencing policy, but I was saying this is what the board asked because it's in the policy.
There are corrections? Oh, Trustee Plasse?
I just wonder how we get around this, and if I wouldn't have heard this public comment, I would have no clue that. There's anything going on with CIN. Seems like. Three-month lag is, there needs to be some other method to close that loop. I don't really know how we do that.
Director?
I think, I'd have to go back and watch, I'd have to go back and watch the videos, but the one before November mentioned was made of the current situation with CIN and their different books with their current joint powers agreement than the one they're trying to establish. But it wasn't on that agenda, so I think it didn't come up, because they were, they're in a process right now where they have, they have, I think, pulled up their budget where they, you know, have retained an attorney, they're working on a JPA. And there was some question, and I think, I think I referred to this before, but there were some issues with the current JPA and the current units and ballot, what the state thought of them. So they're really kind of in a flux position right now, trying to figure out just their own paperwork. So I'm pretty sure it came up on a previous agenda, and I didn't want to mention it here, but it wasn't, didn't happen beyond the November agenda, because they had, I think there was no update at that level. So that's why it's not there. But it is obviously in the, on the top now.
Mr. Plasse?
Another comment or question is, on the annual CIN, you look at the annual budget, they've got a total of 199,000, 200,000, basically. CIN pays 90, over 92,000, almost half of it. So. I don't really know why they think they want to have ties with us, but we're paying for half of it. We should get half the vote, whether they're kicked off or not, is what I think. But are we really, I guess we haven't paid that much yet this year, but if they did decide to do this, we would have only paid the 25,000. But anyway, I find it a little bit absurd, but that's what they're saying to us, only pay for half of it.
Okay, there are no further questions to the consent agenda. And without objection, consent agenda is accepted by unanimous consent. And we are now moving on to item number six, New Library Network, January 2025, Financial Statements. Plasse?
I've got some, it's huge, and I guess some of the property tax part that got entered here. Give the business manager to just kind of clarify, we've got. Nothing in our budget for property tax, item two and three, for the tax relief that comes from the state, so that really should be rolled up into the top-line item. But it shows zero percent. Has been a bit of it. So I guess my question really is, has this really already been paid by the state as part of this payment from the county? And then if so, why is, or the bond, will that be showing year-to-date, we paid 276, but we've been, or we've been given 276 year-to-date, but we've given 121,000 in January, which I think is the money that would have come from the county. Use all this works. Because if I add up everything year-to-date, I would think that would be everything that came in January from the county. And that's about 52.7% of the budget. Anyway. Just to the explanation of kind of what came from the county and how those add up.
Yes, so.
Yes, so line item two and three, which show zero for the approved of an annual budget. Those are things that we do not expect because we don't know if the state and county are going to give that to us. So the current month, if you add those up, yes, the check was all those together from the county. And we split it out by general ledger numbers in order to specify what they're from, for the auditor to be able to know. What the different monies are, so the line two and three are money that is above budgeted. Because you, we had, we didn't have any expectations of knowing how much that would. And then as far as the bond levy, out of the check that we received from Kootenay County, one hundred twenty-one thousand, one hundred eighty-six dollars, fifty-nine cents. Was from the January check, but the monies that we've received since this fiscal year, twenty-five started in October. They are required by law to put all of the property tax money that comes in until the bond levy is paid. So all of the property tax money that came in from October, November, and December goes into the bond levy. And so once that has been covered, then we can start putting it into the other line items. Does that help?
Yeah, it does, thank you.
Trustee Allen?
Yeah, so a question of the business manager, if that's okay with the chair. So line items two and three of our revenue, come up to ballpark, let's say two hundred thousand dollars. Was line item one reduced then by the two hundred thousand dollars, because. It was, if it wasn't, it was seen, we have a, I'll say a windfall, but an increase of two hundred thousand dollars coming in, so I expected. We budgeted property taxes for whatever, five million, so for dollars, and we didn't budget anything for two and three, so if we're getting money in through two and three. Are we reducing line item one by the total amount that we?
So it's not a reduction, it's that the property tax money comes in, and then on the form, there is specification of what's. What the money is coming from, so we specifically see how much is property tax related and the state homeowner tax related. So yes, that is above our normal property taxes, so there's, we're not reducing it from the property taxes, it's just an increase, if you look at it that way.
So we. So we have two hundred thousand dollars more than we were anticipating for this fiscal year? No? Or maybe I'm not reading this correctly, okay.
And trustee?
I think it's simply that the property tax that the taxpayers pay, when they go through on their invoice. There's a discount from the state, but that's the portion of this, two and three is a portion of the property, of the homeowner's property tax the state's paying. So the homeowner just isn't paying as much, and all three line items, one through three. Should add up to the property tax that we're expecting. It's, it's, the property owners just aren't paying as much because the state's paying part of it.
Yeah, that's my understanding of it, okay, so looking at these green checking and savings ICS bank account. That you made, it looks like the low for twenty twenty-four was one point three million, and the low. For twenty-four, twenty-five would be one point eight million, and then on the last sheet in the. Stable thing, about halfway down, it says the emergency fund, best practices for approximately two additional months for emergencies is eight hundred ninety-eight thousand. So it looks like we're well above that, and that the sky is not in fact falling like a lot of people have claimed, we're doing good. Good, just want to make sure I said that properly, trustee class?
Yeah, I, I really appreciate the business manager making the graph, that really helped. What I would ask is, on your summary. There's the two months that were put in here. The recommendation of two months emergency, I'd like to not add in as expense that gets subtract, I just maybe might have notes. Down here at the bottom, saying. We should have at least eight hundred ninety-eight or something, instead of subtracting it like it's some anticipated expense. And it's, it's not a hard fast rule, that's months, the county treasurer told me it shouldn't be more than two months, because we'd be taking too much money from the taxpayers. So I've just, like that, to be down here is a, I know, should have at least that, that's what I'd ask of others.
Trustee Allen?
Would, could that change be consistent with what our treasurer would like to see, since she's kind of our financial person as well? Is that below on there? Is that even with generally accepted county principles or practices? Not a big thing, but before we just make a non-professional decision on changing the report, that's all.
Yeah, well, we don't have consensus yet, and the treasurer is not here to ask, so maybe that's something that we should bring up next month. Did you have something to add to that?
I just would add that this third sheet is just to help bring clarity to the board, how the numbers work out, because when you see one point eight million. As our lowest amount in the checking account, it could give an impression that we're flush with money, and that's not really the case. Which is why we have minus these other items, like we have fourteen thousand outstanding checks, which is required for accounts payables. We have several grants and donations that are restricted for certain things, and then we have the ICRA money, that's what's left to still spend, and then the emergency fund. It would be nice if we could put the emergency fund in a different bank account situation so that it would be separated. I checked into that with the bank, and they did not suggest doing that because it would lower the amount of interest that we receive. We receive or pre-receive about seventy thousand dollars in interest by having all the money combined in the ICS accounts. So, I mean, I could certainly put it down below, this is not something that the treasurer or even the auditor would necessarily look over. This is not an official document, it's just for your knowledge.
Okay, well, we are over time, so if there are no other questions.
I think so, on page two. Down at the bottom, eighty-three. Benders. There was a note here on September fifteenth, the board voted to reduce property tax and. Budget deficit to be paid with carryforward funds. I don't think that's correct, we reduced property tax, but we shook the U R D credits. And maybe the U R D credits went into carryforward fund, but we didn't rob carryforward to pay to reduce. Property tax, we reduced property tax, equal amount as the unexpected U R D credits. I guess I'd like that corrected, maybe it ended up with carryforward fund, but it's. We didn't rob, intentionally robbed carry.
Business manager, I can certainly make that, that just came from the previous.
Yeah.
Okay, so if there are no further questions, without objection, CLN, January twenty twenty-five financial statements are accepted. Okay, moving on to item number seven, director's report.
Okay, so the, just to point out a few things, your reports, you might have known this, but we did face the thank you banners. You just see they're post fall, one of an apple. Right now, they're just on building themselves, so you'll see them. The intention is to move them to in the springtime, and it's better, they're more closer to the roadside. Regarding mature content collection, my only report is to say that. I'm implementing that, and so it's the only thing I have since last meeting, is discussion of my facilities. Manager about the actual special operation space and shelves, I think all lined up, and so we, other library reflection space that we have. And that ready. For today's report, I just wanted to focus on page two, the circulation statistic. It is important that I cover some things that can be part of some of the other discussions, so. So on this page, you look at things, it says down towards the bottom, the resources, the January twenty twenty-five usage, and then it shows review, which is iron, and then audiobooks, e-books. But I do want to point out that there are other digital resources that are available to CLN patrons. I just want to talk a bit about that. First thing is that through a database called Lilly. L I dot org, which is a resource of the Idaho Mission for Libraries, we have access to quite large version of electronic resources. I would encourage you to go to L I L I dot org to see this, but just to give a sense, like you have quite a large number. Oh, you'll, you're familiar with Gale, publishing house, and Ebsco Host, a very. Popular, basically the standard in the library world for providing e-resources, and it's quite a long list of these databases which are available for our patrons, courtesy of. Mission libraries. So I would encourage, like, I don't want to belabor it, but there's a lot of Yale resources, and your electronic books. American history, and there's some Ebsco that you probably know you with. Electronic databases that provide access to scholarly journals and full text. Free standard for the library world, something like the Schultzen guides for repairing cars, which are all very familiar with, it used to take up. Many, many days of a library shelf, but many years now moving to electronics, so these kinds of resources are available to all of CLN patrons. Consumer Reports is another one. I would encourage you to look at those, because those are all available, they're not related to the discussion with CIN, with CINons, but these are, these are. Electronic resources which are available to CLN patrons, and just to give some sense of. Statistics and those, I hope that one day I can get this kind of stuff onto here, so I can catch that a little bit more of what you see, but just to give a sense of that, so. And I, I just have this report today, I do want to give a shout out, I want to say thank you very much, probably to my tech services department manager, and also IT, so Kerry Wilson, Mark Foster, who worked very hard. Behind the scenes, they provided me with this, with this information, and I just got this little piece this morning, but just to give a sense of, of access to these databases, so. I suppose moving out of my postal code, so in Apple, for example, Ebsco Host, one hundred eighty-six. Uses, Academic Search Premier, one of the databases, at eighty-two, this is for the calendar twenty twenty-four. Library Philosophy, which is another database in there, there are two uses, Novelist at forty-one, World Book Online at three, Gale, Ebooks at thirteen. So Apple, another postal code, Hayden. Hayden had five hundred and six uses of Ebsco Host, hundred sixty-two of them were for Academic Search Premier. Academic Search Premier is a scholarly, multi-discipline, full-text database for academic research, covers academic disciplines being offered at colleges and universities. Novelist, thirty-six acts sessions, I guess, World Book Online has ninety-nine, Hayden. Gale Ebooks seventy-two, so I hope we maybe get these kind of stats on there, so you have a better sense of the electronic resources that are available to CLN patrons that we have. So I have that statistic. Another point, it gets a little bit over complicated things, but when it comes to electronic resources. Sometimes they'll show up in the ILS. Sometimes they don't, so recently, we had change with our ILS platform. On the front end, and so in the new platform, still the same company, new platform. Things like Ebsco will show up in the search, if you search for something, you'll, you'll get books, you'll get overdrive books, you'll get Ebsco, so that really skyrocketous statistics, so for example, Ebsco database, like. Searches from this, October twenty-three to twenty-four, there were seven thousand five hundred sixty-one searches, but once it became part of the ILS. October twenty-four to January twenty-five, there's seven hundred fourteen thousand, six hundred sixty-four searches, right, so. These are important things to consider, what, you know, when we look at what the ILS means to the patron, what access, you know, really looks like what the data is, so I just wanted to. Put that out there, so people get a sense of, the board gets a sense of what we offer for electronic resources for our patients, so apart from what we're getting from Lilly. Our board, we also have a couple additional things, one of them, still think Ebsco, a very popular, very important company for libraries, is something called Flipster. Flipster's a magazine database. Just to give you a fast, so some of the titles, don't read all of them, but titles in the database, Better Homes and Gardens. Consumer Reports is there, Consumer Reports on Health, Country Living, Food at Home, Food Network, Guns and Ammo, issue TV, House Beautiful, Keeping Your Finance, Men's Health. National True Graphic Kids, goes on on Rolling Stone, Burn World, US Weekly. Women's Day, Women's Health, so this is a magazine database, which our patrons have access to. The last twelve months' usage was two hundred and twenty-six sessions, with four hundred twenty-three searches, session being sort of. Accessing it, and then searches within it, so that's what they're going to make the searches within it, that's four hundred twenty, four hundred twenty-three of those, so. Again, my hope is that I can get all this kind of, it's a lot of data, I know, it's actually important data to understand some of these other things we're going to end up talking about. What, what kind of electronic resources we're providing to our patrons. We also have manual languages, obviously explanatory, it's a, it's a platform where you can go in and learn, and learn. Language, like Duolingo, but it's a paid or. Resource. Last twelve months are seven hundred and three sessions, six hundred and twenty-fourteen used. CLN patrons. Another one we have is Data Axle Reference Solutions, which is sort of a business consumer. Database, I don't imagine it would factor too much into use by monitor, but they might, Data Axle Reference, it used to be called Reference USA. Last twelve months, three hundred thirty-one sessions, and one thousand seven hundred sixteen searches in that database. And then just last one, ansitree.com, we're all familiar with. Ansitree.com is a bit different, because it's not usually remote, provided remotely, so it's based on. Is it in-house use, you can still log in, and we make it available, but it's in-house, it's not something you can do remotely. But it is available, and then October twenty-three to September twenty-four, there were two hundred seventy-one sessions with four thousand five hundred thirty-nine searches. So that's just a little bit about the electronic resources that the CLN provides to its patrons, all its patrons. And. On this page, you'll see physical items, sixty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-five. Of the physical circulation of items in January, I just want to talk a little bit about that, just to give some context for our sessions that we need to have. Sixty-two thousand five hundred twenty-five circulations in January. Three thousand four hundred ninety-one of those were by minor cards. And then a hundred and twelve of those were by minor limited cards, and then seventy-nine were by team limited cards. So that comes to three thousand six hundred eighty-two, over sixty-two thousand five hundred twenty-five, which is five point eight percent of the usage. And then. How many of those items were unique to CIN, and this is obviously a very important topic that we need to discuss, thank you, but how many of those items were unique to CIN? Four thousand and eighty-seven were unique to CIN. That is to say, CLN doesn't own them at all. So that's four thousand and eighty-seven over sixty-two thousand five hundred twenty-five, that's six point five percent. The thing that I'm having a hard time getting data for. Oh, well, here's another one, so for, for this, for the, for the January numbers, there were a total of six thousand six hundred twenty-five items which came in. From non-CLN libraries, so of the sixty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-five that you see in the report here, oh, that's sixty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-five, six thousand, six hundred twenty-five. Came in from non-CLN libraries. So, but then the other, there's three things happening, is that we may own the book, but it came in from a CIN library anyway, so it's, I think the more important statistic is, there were four thousand. And eighty-seven of those sixty-two thousand five hundred twenty-five items, which we don't own, right, so, so, so that's important, but again, the one thing I. Right, so, so, so that's important, but again, the one thing I haven't been able to get a hold of yet. Is the breakdown by minors, like. Which ones of those items were requested by minors? Uh. To speak to the whole issue of of the one statistic, which is very important, the nine thousand. Uh. On this, on this report, at the first page, eight thousand eight hundred ninety seven. Minor car cases. Right, what is the usage of of our collection and that kind of, so that's all, that's what I'm trying to speak to here. So this, uh, but again, the reason why I can't get this data is, is because we have a ticket. In I T taking in with with the company, Bywater. Uh, and Bywater is trying to extrapolate that data for us. And it, my team has worked very hard using kind of raw exports to Excel and it's a lot of sorting and figuring out. But we can't arrive at all the data, we we need to answer some of these questions. But, um. And just, just, just base, just. Regarding the physical collection, there's two hundred and twenty three thousand nine hundred and seventy seven C L N items. There are three hundred sixteen thousand two hundred and forty one C I N items. But there's only a hundred and forty thousand one hundred and twenty five items that are unique to C I N, which C L N doesn't hold. That's as far as I've got so far, it's a work in progress, I I need to find out what what that breakdown is. Uh, how many are, what part of what collection, nonfiction, fiction, audio visual, I don't know, okay, so. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done to get the kind of data we need to be able to make decisions. From, from my perspective, either really important piece of data to assess collections, to be able to say, well, if we want to serve our patrons. Uh, what does our collection need to have? And if you weren't part of a consortium, you could often use interlibrary loan data. Is, you know, my, I turn to my interlibrary loan librarian and say, hey, what are all of our patrons asking for that we don't have? And they would say, oh, there's trending this, trending that, and we would use that data to make our collection more robust for our patrons. So from from a librarian's perspective, that's kind of what I'm interested in with all this, but I'm just providing this, this data. And finally, just on that, right bottom of that page, you see the audio books and ebooks, and this is reading the part. That relates to overdraft. Which is a C I N owned product. And I can't quite get the data I need yet, because you can see that in January, there were seven thousand eight hundred fifty seven audiobook downloads, there were six thousand one hundred ninety. E-book downloads. But I don't know, or, or. My team can't get the access, get access to the data yet, and Bywater is working on it, but we're hoping to be able to extrapolate the data, which would show how many of those downloads. You know. Minor patrons that currently have access. Uh, to to do that, uh, to just to just to see what we're dealing with in our student. Um. Question, and how best to provide a really great collection to our patrons. The. Uh, this is the end of mine.
Um, over, over time, we're bad as well, um. Objection, we'll go on to the facilities department report by Randy Zapata. Did I, did I pronounce that right? Is it Zapata?
Yes.
Okay.
Most of you already know, but I'm putting myself as Randy Zapata, any library networks facility manager. My, in my position, I'm responsible for ensuring that all the facilities under such things, safe and compliant and static. Accomplishes, I have one full-time facility specialist and vendors who maintain all district buildings and vehicles. For the facilities department, you succeed, major planning and budget preparation are required. But if you miss the admin team and the board of trustees, you should understand what projects and funding will be needed to limit standards to maintain our facilities. First part of my presentation will be a data project for F Y twenty three, twenty four. A second part will be the kind of projection of funding that will be needed to run the district line. Most of my time is still more with this, I'm on that, it's all your intelligence and. If you have any questions, we can ask that, so the Hayden group finally got done for multiple years. That was a little over five hundred thousand dollars. We upgraded the H VAC controls, given that the ability to publish you remotely, essentially from any district building. And then we upgraded the lighting in Hayden. Yeah, upfront cost seventy five thousand. And we had a reduction of eighty seven hundred watts. But this is the reimbursed, I put forty five thousand two, four hundred and seventy two. Even the cost of twenty nine thousand five hundred twenty eight. Monthly savings for that is two hundred and forty seven dollars. Daily savings is twenty nine sixty. The R O I was nine point nine, which I'm unhappy with, but they don't do the calculation the same way. So that's why it looks like it's a further out, get reimbursed. Security cameras were upgraded in Spirit Lake, that gives facilities and administrative staff. The ability to remote, or to remote the access footage that we needed for some reason. I mean, these sealed the Hayden and Pine Hardy parking lots. All the planned. Projects, now I'm going to go into the defined plan, but everybody is well aware of Whole Fall and Hampho. On January fourteenth, there was a. Damage to the water pipes and a flood at the library, all it costs of that was nine hundred and sixty nine thousand nine hundred and fifty, what was paid for by insurance funds. A day later, Ethel happened, now with a total cost of four hundred and twelve thousand one hundred and seventy one, also paid for by different. Um, the facility staff worked with iCramp to get everything paid for. Replaced the carpet, drywall. Insulation upgrade and what, a little bit on that, so before they replaced, I took an infrared camera and looked at all the areas where there was. Air coming in, I did it afterwards, and I was staffing an improvement, pretty simply just upgraded insulation compared to what it was when it was built in ninety eight. I also installed sensors, there's eight post falls in tune in Ethel, where I can remotely. Monitor temperatures, I can alert my phone if it drops below, I have it set to seventy or thirty four. And I can constantly watch it to see how cold it's going to get. Um. Obviously, I washed it a lot the last couple of weeks, I've been older, but. Got to that successfully. Upgraded all the, um, all the wrench for most of the furniture, that goddamn is the circulation area and the furnishings in the show bins. And then the restrooms in Ethel got upgraded because of water in the law, so we have to do that because of, you know. Damage from all. Any questions on?
Uh, just us?
Um, monitoring of the sensors, sounds like it's a manual thing, rather than you get an alert, but. What if your battery runs down on your phone and, or what if? You're not around to hear it, is there any automation to it, and then how do you? How do you address it, or is there an automatic way to address it?
So my phone battery isn't making that, but the phone rings constantly until I. Rings and rings and rings until I. Saying that I've seen it. Always get it like that.
What if you're not around to do anything about it, or your car is stalled or something? Is, is there an automatic way for the system to? Address that low temperature?
No, then I would either call with my staff, or call somebody here and ask them to address it, but. My thought was that I'm going to handle it, I don't necessarily want to put that responsibility on somebody else. Do you think that's a responsibility of the facilities department? I have to conduct here, whatever hours I will, I mean, it's just part of the job.
I, I just would have thought there would have been something like a heater comes on thermostat if it drops below. Certain temperature.
I mean, there's really no way to heat into the attic. You know, a fire hazard, but. I would, and I have done it, I wanted to see the difference, I pulled out a couple ceiling tiles and see if that make a difference, and I was real cold and it did bring it back up a little bit. So that is the answer question, is I would either come near myself or have somebody open the ceiling tiles.
Okay. Uh, Tracy Anna?
Yeah, mine was a similar question, because the temperature excursion we had back last January. Yeah, it's unusual, but it has gotten colder than that before, so if some ceiling tiles are removed, is that sufficient to put heat in the overhead for, let's say, a sprinkler system? Has it?
It seemed to have made a difference, yes.
I mean, a difference enough where it's not going to free, I'm.
Correct.
I'm interrogating on it, so just kind of curious, and the post falls went up, obviously you had a problem, and so did Ethel with the hose bib, I believe it was. What about the other facilities, have we looked at all those places where we have risk? Because my, my big concern is obviously another long-term outage, and the other one would be being dropped by our insurance company. And I'm, so I'm just curious, and and this, the libraries were not, not picking on you, they weren't the only place that had a problem. There were a lot of stores and other places, and restaurants, whatever, had freeze-ups. So I guess. Or I guess any kind of external plumbing or overhead plumbing for all of our facilities. Have we looked at all the risks there, and do we have basically an action plan, so if an alarm does go off? Way of monitoring to start with, obviously we do, we're saying for post falls. But, um. For example, I think it was a hose bib that, uh, over up in, um, Ethel. Besides putting a, you know, styrofoam cover on the outside, is there an inside shut-off valve now, so that if some kid knocks the cover off? I'm just, I kind of, I don't, I don't have a comfort, sense of comfort right now. For what remediation we've, and action we have done now for all of our facilities regarding mostly cold weather events.
So there is a shut-off now in Ethel, so if it does reset temperature, what access penalty, you know, they can shut it off. Uh, as far as the rest of the facilities, other than. We don't really have the same threat as post falls, we want to ask for included system. Um, Ethel. At, um. And.
But Hayden.
Hayden are the only ones that have a small set of sprinklers and that just in the mechanical room. Um, so I could add sensors in there, that's what, you know, the director wants me to do, that's not a problem with the temperature in those. Rooms.
Yeah, good, we go back. Yeah, mechanical, in my past facility side, mechanical room actually is where things froze up, even in my world once. Because they're typically, I think, on external walls, where outside door access and sprinkler systems are things, and so. We had put electric heater, now with a thermostat on, so if it ever dropped, let's say below forty degrees or something, it pop on. It's, I know it's a risk area in terms of freezing up, and so I'm just. I don't have a comfort sense right now still overall, that we've really looked at each of our facilities, mostly for freezing pipes. That's, that's my concern, and I, I don't want to hold a meeting up just for that one item, but. It's a concern of mine, and again, we, we suffered it, we were fortunate to have billion-dollar coverage for this here and that, all that. I still don't feel, I don't have a comfort level, so I, I feel like this is still an open area for me.
As far as the mechanical rooms, I have no problem adding a heater in there because there's not a fire risk there. That's not a problem, I can add sensors and add a little heater to maintain forty three, you know, whatever. Forty three is a problem.
You ready to go on the press report?
I am. So this next page, I think gives you an idea of what we need to do next, next fiscal year. Um, here's a finding document, so in this living document, hand change, well, handle on. I think it's part of the future. Because when there's now extremely live on the sidewalk and. And Spirit Lake, that's that raising, so we need to replace that. And then inherent whole falls, the A P X system, when they built this building, they never thought about how we're going to get those units out. So all we have is a small stair, except them in the large units are probably fifteen by fifteen square, so there's no way we're getting it down there, so we need to gain access. Early soon, other than in an emergency. And then, now we go on to the spreadsheet. So after thirty five thousand dollars, actually. Gain access, probably be right above the water. Put a door in, then somehow hide it with artwork or make it look attractive. And then. Sidewalk, clearly twenty thousand dollars. Of the expense of any pockets, but I'm, well, I anticipate pockets opening more this year, so all we do. And then each year, I mean, there's the concrete replacement. Anything that needs to happen over the next, you know. I say can, it's just goes out of the, because I wanted to show. The roof replacement, what that looks like. Stop pushing us out a little bit. First, we got the vehicles. Um. Which does include the bookman door, the discovery bus, that's just, those vans, the maintenance van and. Couple, any vehicles we have in one car. Is there any questions, or are you kind of going through here, or?
Uh, what's your thoughts?
I guess, uh, too quick, was, is the sidewalk, Spirit Lake, is that? Is there an option to do something less, it's just one place, it's a crack, you just replace a section? Are you talking about replacing the whole sidewalk, and then? I thought we had, uh. Issues, maybe you're not. I mean, with the sprinter vans, is that? Part of this, that you're replacing a sprinter van, or is there maintenance that has to be done?
There's maintenance on the sprinter.
So we aren't necessarily needing to look to replace one in five years or something?
That was in five years, no, I should have put that on there, but it's not within five years now.
Okay, go ahead, Fran.
So obviously, there's some big numbers there, so that's came to the big town, just figuring out where that money is coming from, but. Um. It's not fair for me to not let everybody know what kind of dollars you actually going to need over the next several years. There's some significant numbers there, I mean, you know, twenty nine, there's two hundred and forty thousand. Again, I can move around a little bit, I don't know how important it is, it really knows itself. Um, the roof replacement, that recent inherent. That would be something that, if anything, I'd want to move forward, not move farther out.
All right, which one did you want to report?
The roof replacement on here. That's the, that's the majority of, about twenty nine.
Tracy Anna?
Yeah, and and one other question, well, at the moment, HVAC system, I know we replaced, I think we replaced the one here on that shore, but.
Just replaced one unit.
One, okay, because that always seems to be a, a mega budget item. Do we have any other expectations of replacing, any doing the major HVAC, I see there was nothing else on here besides. I mean, it was, it's written up as a twenty-five-year life expectancy, but. Um, I don't see any of them scheduled on there, do we, do we think any of them are hitting, going to be hitting their twenty-five-year lifespan within this twelfth? Uh, year.
As far as table hall.
All, all of our places, this is, this is for all our facilities, right?
So the only one I'm concerned with as far as the cost with the HVAC is here, because it's such a complex system. All the location, I could pretty much cover that with just the R and M line.
Okay. Thank you.
Just us?
In the past, we talked about Harrison, that it's. You know, I almost heard it described, it's on. The animal, it's a temporary building. Uh. We need to look at building on another property or dropping, it looks like it's got. The only thing is carpet replacement and, and, uh. Painting. Is all I think I see on it, so is, is it? Is there one? Anyway, is, is there really anything that we need to worry about with Harrison now that we've got the French drain and.
I think we're still pretty good once we got that drain done, and then the same. It's pretty good, we're still going to maintain, it is a modular building, so there's more maintenance involved, but. As long as we maintain, I think we should be fine.
Look like you have any more questions, you have anything else for us?
No, as long as you guys are helping me with it.
Okay, um, thank you so much for the remarks.
One last thing real quick, so obviously all your. Market, that's going to have seventy five years self.
Tracy Boss?
Hello. Um. I think it's in the budget process, and that would be the summer, but we wouldn't. Didn't do it this last year, but we would be more of, um.
Proud.
Or, or whatever these, however you want to say it.
Okay.
Or the, we have to set more money aside into that. That fund, right? Because that's for capital asset. What stands for capital asset, something related. Preparation. Fun. How do we put money into it, is that a? Is there a? Statutes in that, or?
Uh, yeah, well, there's the statute, it just said, we can't, that's because you can't do that.
Uh, yeah, well, there's the statute, it just said, we can't, that's because you can't be that. I was only tasking Randy with doing the, basically the top part of this chart with the CIP, but it did make sense without showing the chart part. Uh, but the car part, obviously, not now, car part is generally, yeah. But again, and, and then looking over the story of the, what's happened with car, we we didn't do it this consistently, but we averaged about sixty thousand, both of us. It was uh six point four, so ten years. We've been putting in different various amounts, not how it's consistent, but I haven't put out here. But this is all, this is I, I call them possible contributions and possibly very poor. So I actually haven't done the deep dive into the bottom part of this chart. I just need Randy to go and present the top part and pronounce something.
Okay, so conclude the whole thing. Thank you, Zan, Randy.
Okay, appreciate it.
All right, uh, so now we are moving on to the policy packet discussion, which includes ADA notification policy, ADA grievance procedures, ADA public notice, facilities management policy and vehicle use policy. Um, we added some items to the agenda after it was already full. Um, so uh, we don't want to be here late, so we need to not dial. So we can go through these one at a time. We could just approve them all at the end at one time. That's okay with everyone? What's your thoughts?
I'd like to go through each one briefly.
Yeah. Well, we'll go through them one at a time.
That's what I meant.
Yeah.
So I, I'm a little confused what the ADA coordinator is. I, I can see there's an email that goes to somebody, but is that in somebody's job description or is that just the change, Randy's got another name or something?
Yeah, we just took Randy's name out so that it was just more official, should we change it differently? It is Randy, it is the, yes, the facilities manager who would be ADA coordinator. So it was just for the sake of the policies to make it a little bit more polished and, and less dependent on specifics like that. So we took Randy's name out and left it as its title only, um, in all spots.
Okay, welcome to our legal council and I don't believe I had any uh comments or changes, uh, trustee Hanning. Add to the ADA notification policy, which is what I'm working on right now.
No, mine's a thank you. Thank you for putting line item numbers all the way through these policies so that in case we do want to discuss something, we don't waste time trying to figure out where we're talking about on there with each other. Um, and I don't have any changes personally for the ADA policies.
No, okay. Um, so there is nothing further on the ADA notification policy. We'll go into the ADA grievance procedure. On line number twenty-two, there should be a period at the end of that sentence. That is all I had for that policy.
No debate.
Um, well, actually, I guess we should get consensus. Okay, so everyone agree that there should be a period there?
Yes.
Okay, so we have at least three people, four people agreeing. Uh, so we have consensus on that. Any other suggestions or questions?
No.
Okay, given none, we will move on to the next one, public notice, ADA notification. I have zero changes on that. Same, uh, trusty boss?
The last change, floor print or brail versions. Communication available on request, is that something we're required to offer? And how do you do that? Is there we have to go out or something if somebody asks it or?
For my facilities or actually communications as well. I, I'm assuming if it's asked for, then we provide it. Of our print wouldn't be hard to do because we can do that ourselves in-house. Our brail, I'm sure we have, if someone
today required that law, we'd have to go up.
Okay.
Okay, there's nothing else on that one. And we move on to the facilities management policy. Trusty Hanning?
Um, I looked at the um, policy draft here and I did not go back and compare it to a position description to see, okay, what was the position description versus what's actually in the policy? But I was just curious if it's missing in the bullets, we'll call it down on the lines twenty-one through thirty-two, saying what routine maintenance is. Should there be something in there uh referring to janitorial landscapes, snow management or removal? Uh, I don't think there's any covering much outdoorsy stuff. It does say sidewalks, I see on line number thirty-one, but I am imagining that those are facilities type functions there, that need maintenance, maintenance there. Just to guess, the vehicle ticket needs it, give it that too? All, all the ones you mentioned are outsourced. Is there oversight? Oh, yeah, oversight and selecting the invoice, selecting the company and all that. So if we want to add that, that wouldn't be under maintenance, they're not doing all the routine. Okay.
It is in the job.
Yeah, yeah, it, it is in the job description as far as taking care of those contracts. Okay, then we'll give that.
Uh, trusty boss?
Um, the facilities manager deals with the vehicles. This is about facilities, not the responsibility, is that right? So vehicles, that's why there's nothing in here about vehicles.
Fishing out of power.
Yeah, there's seven parts.
Oh, oh, something like that, okay, well.
But the facility manager does both. Yeah, the facility managers.
No tip?
There is nothing further on that policy. I'll move on to the next one, the vehicle use policy. I have zero changes.
No changes here.
Nothing, trusty boss?
In a policy, should we be naming specific vehicles? This is you knew this once every five years or something? Maybe the vehicle should be referred to you know, in a like a vehicle inventory or something like that.
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
Uh, trustee Hanning?
Yeah, sorry, I had, I had a similar observation, but if you look at that policy, who cares what policy, which particular vehicles, that's probably on your plant property listing anyway somewhere. And then have to update the policy just because you got rid of a vehicle seems uh, it's, it is a detail we don't need in a policy personally. So I agree with trustee Floss's observation or question.
You have an opinion by administration?
Well, my easiest move the general use vehicles section. See how it falls into that. Responsibilities, generalities. Yeah.
What's that?
And both, but there's really nothing significant in, in lines thirty-seven and thirty-eight. My misreading. No one?
I don't know, there's, there is, well say there's stuff on line forty that follows line thirty-seven, but again, it's meaning specifically a bold. Uh, trusty boss?
I, I guess I'd like to see for both line thirty and thirty-seven for that, maybe combined under each one, just refer to some vehicle inventory library or CLN vehicle inventory or something, or refer to all the lists. If you could put the special where the vehicles require special training and the general use on the list. Does that springer?
We're just on the second page. Line forty.
But it's a special thing, but they both have something on or name specific vehicles. I change.
So should we keep the vehicles requiring special training section in there?
That was spending time, we're skipping uh, I'm thirty-one. Vehicles are available for general use by library employees. Now based upon schedule and availability. All we're saying is that they exist. Wouldn't need to list what they uh, all the red lines in here. There have the vehicle that are part, CDO and all the special training, so that's yeah, you definitely remove the
I mean, I don't think our sprinter man or the nasal man actually know they're just seen as to their drivers.
Oh.
That was ten years from this, because the side of the vehicles. That's the next let me take this ability, there's blind spots, there's no rearview view, she's side view, he's a vehicle. Thing is, he has ladders, so there's high treacher.
Randy, do they require special training or is that just a common move?
Yeah, which is something situation.
So we could just remove lines thirty through forty?
Yes.
Okay, um, so we have consensus on that, removing thirty to forty? Okay, we have consensus on that, minus thirty to forty are on. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Okay, so there is no further discussion on the five policies listed under number nine. Uh, trustee boss?
On, on forty-six, one if somebody's got a really bad driving record. You evaluate them, but didn't we put reserve the right to uh, prevent them from driving because we don't want to imply that everybody gets to drive, that our insurance is gonna really go hot just because they've got a bad driver. I don't know whether we have to check in with insurance. Do all the drivers have to be listed with insurance? So maybe we should say that all, make it clear that the drivers and the driver records are submitted to insurance. And, and insurance at the discretion of insurance, uh, the rights are guaranteed or?
And probably they just ask for that information. And I think for us to determine our risk, our internal processes for evaluating that. I don't know, it's
Yeah, I mean, forty-sixteen, forty-nine seem sufficient. The devaluation would have the result of what the evaluation accomplished, right? So, I mean, that means implied that the evaluation has a result based on driver license record, uh, evidence of valid driver's license, and all these are
Okay, and I would like to leave it as edited. Okay, so we're leaving it? Okay, yes, we have consensus on leaving it. Okay, if there's no further discussion on these policies, uh, without objection, all five policies and agenda item number nine are approved as edited. Okay, uh, moving on to item number ten. Human resources specialist job description discussion.
And this, um, really just coming out of my arrival here and trying to assess rate of efficiency at the higher end of the district. Obviously, before I go there, there was and continues to be, you know, efficiency assessment of, of the frontline, the branch level. But there are some, some inefficiencies certainly up at the, up at the district level. Uh, talked a little about that already, reflection, splitting collection development and technical services for, for best practice and, and better results in those departments. So the same thing's happening here. Right now, the business manager and previous team before I got here, I guess for quite a long time, the business manager wore the hat of HR uh, as well as other things in the finance, basically everything, particularly with the financial department, uh, E B R and, and human resources. So the goal here is actually to split that out so that I have a, a business manager who's the financial manager and deals with finances. And then we'll have someone who actually deals with HR specifically. So that that's the motivation behind this. Uh, so this is a human resource specialist job description, uh, just like the collection development job description that was approved and then this is approved and then we'll move forward and help us to fund this. Randy, this here, that to me is a very critical thing. We need to move on as soon as we can. So this is the first step, getting this job description in front of the board and, and having them approve this. Uh, we don't have a human resource specialist dedicated to that uh critical part in organizations. It's been something that business manager took care of on the side. And it's just, uh, we'll be, um, and so that's why it's on the table.
Okay, um, I read through it. I'd like to find to me, um, I just had two very minor corrections on page two.
There's no line or number.
Uh, yeah, so the fifth bullet point down from the top on page two says, may prepare, uh, wait a minute. Uh, oh, it should, well, it seems like it would make more sense to me if it said may prepare reports rather than may prepare report. That's sound good, everyone? Okay, looks like we have consensus on that. And, uh, the last bullet point in that same section may participates in, uh, could be made participate in.
Move the S from down there and put
That sound good?
Yes. Big catch.
We have consensus on that. So any other corrections or?
No, I
Okay, uh, trusty boss?
So you've got examples of work, um, and then other on the first page, on its first page, and then you've got other duties and responsibilities, but I may examples work the last one, may perform variety of janitorial tasks. Clean deep facilities, smooth hillside sweeping sidewalks. Like that, along then other duties. That's not a typical
Yeah, that's true.
Work for a age upper.
That's like the other duties of the site. Yeah. Yeah, I think it's probably in that same part of the other job descriptions throughout the institute, like exactly. So the idea here is that on a, on a given day where the might be necessary to, to do, to do something outside, because that's the version of the man office, for example, you're not being asked there's no, you know, in any extensive way, but it's just a, it is on the duty of the assignment. I think the examples of work is where resides the bundle of both the, the system, the cross description, the question.
So leave as is? Okay. Anything else? Uh, trusty boss?
So acceptable experience training, um
It's on page three?
Page three, social degree, human resources. My experience, social degrees don't really come in that specific of a maybe I'm wrong, but usually it's a social science or social uh art. But I, I think the human resources or business administration belongs with the bachelor. But what is it that we're really looking for at a minimum is probably if you want that specific training under a bachelor's degree?
Um there are specific associate's degrees, just there are bachelor's degrees. And so this has to fit in underneath our current shell of jobs. It's like our business administrator, our manager has the bachelor's, and so we can't necessarily have this position also require a bachelor's, although it'd be nice. So it's about even making sure we are aligned as an organization. And we do get, we, I'm looking at applicants for other And we do get, we, I'm looking at applicants for other jobs right now, and they are very specialized associate's degrees that are coming here.
Okay, so we know this. Right, so anything else? Okay, none, without objection. The human resource specialist job description is approved?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Okay.
Is it, do we really have the need for a full-time person for this? We've been doing it for years with a hard time. But I guess I'd like a little justification of why we need to have a full-time person.
You should be brought to. Human re- uh, human resources has been done by the team of three in Haddon. Yes, so it's using director, assistant director, and business manager. Um, it is complicated and we. Need the support, like for instance, I spend about two and a half days a week doing HR for the district. And that's, I don't have two and a half days to do my job as the assistant director. And then the business manager probably could spend that, if not more. And then all of our work as an admin team is also HR related. So there is a need for someone to be very specialized and make sure we're. Doing the best we can, like with liability and for up to date on all of our practice.
Okay, so without objection, the human resources specialist job is approved, and we're going on to the next thing, which is.
Reasons.
Yeah, recess, everyone go play. Oh.
Don't jump over the moon.
I'm gonna be back in ten minutes. It's three forty-two, and this meeting will come back to order.
Oh, sorry.
Alrighty, uh, so our next item is trustee training by our legal counsel.
Good afternoon, board, staff, and everyone participating here today, we appreciate each and every one of you being here. Today, I'm gonna deliver a trustee training on the Idaho Public Records Act. You can find that in Idaho Code seventy-four, one oh one through one twenty-seven. There's also resources on the Idaho Attorney General website, there's a Public Records Act manual. Idaho Code seventy-four, one oh one thirteen defines a public record. It's fairly broad, that includes but not limited to any writing, and writing is also defined. But the key here is it contains information relating to the conduct or administration of the public's business. If it's prepared, owned, used, or retained. For instance, by CLN. Regardless of physical form or characteristics. So what a public record is not is a writing that doesn't contain information relating to the public's business. Or say, personal correspondence. So maybe you're texting your wife during a meeting, probably don't want to do that. Just in case you'll get a public records request, but if you're texting a member of the audience about maybe a policy or how you're gonna vote. That could be subject to public records requests. If a board member or a staff or any employee is taking personal notes. Provided solely for their own use, it's not a public record as long as they're not shared with any other person or entity. Now, I don't know if that includes me as legal counsel, but the statute's pretty clear, if it's for you only and it's not shared, then it's not a public record.
Do you want me to wait until you're done to ask a question?
Oh, really?
Okay, so if a trustee was getting advice from someone in the audience. Or somewhere else on board business, then that would be subject to public records?
Well, getting advice, meaning from a person or an attorney, if it was their attorney, it potentially could be exempt. Under one of the exemptions I'll go over later, seventy-four, one oh four, nine two three, third, three two oh one five. Idaho Rule of Evidence five oh two, but if it's just the trustee and a person correspondence. And it's containing information related to the conduct or administration of the public's business, prepared, owned, used, or retained. By that entity, then it could be subject to public, public records requests. And so we would look at this on a case-by-case basis, so an important thing. Under how we handle these, which I'll talk about a little bit later, is we. Take the request and we separate the exempt from the non-exempt records. And so if you provided a piece of correspondence to me between you and your personal attorney getting advice. I would likely say that's exempt from a public records request under an exemption. But I would first have to determine whether or not it's a public record. So if you gave me a text message between a member of the audience about where you want to go eat dinner later. That's not gonna be relevant to this discussion, so I would determine that's not a public record. Therefore, we won't disclose it, and we don't need an exception, does that make sense? Yes, sir?
What about for the board? For example, you're our attorney. We have, should have attorney-client privilege. That's covered, or you can talk about it later if it is, but.
Correct, that's one of the most common used, commonly used statutory authority for denial. And that comes from seventy-four, one oh four, which gives you sort of a blanket exemption for federal state law, federal regulations. And I've listed where that's codified with attorney-client privilege. Now, it's not absolute. Uh, there are some contours of what constitutes attorney-client privilege, and so. We're talking about CLN for the purpose of me rendering you legal advice. It's more than likely to be privileged, but if we're having a discussion that's not for the purpose of rendering, rendering legal advice or not CLN. It would be privileged, but it also may not necessarily be a public record as well. So that's why it's really important to maintain a, an analysis of, is it a public record? Yes or no, then yes, go down here. Is there an exemption, yes or no? Right, so we do that on each record. Right, unless there's more questions on that, I'll move down to seventy-four, one oh one twelve, that defines public official. And you'll see that you come within this, it's fairly broad. Um, and it includes also whether elected, appointed, or hired, includes employees. Seventy-four, one oh one seventeen defines writing, so since a public record includes any writing. What is a writing, a writing is very broad. Handwriting, typewriting, printing, photo stating, photographing, and every means of recording. Including letters, words, pictures, sounds, or symbols. Or combination thereof in all papers, maps, magnetic or paper tapes, photographic films and prints, magnetic or punch cards, discs, drums, or other documents. So pretty much everything that could contain information, including data. Um, requests for records should be made to the designated custodian. Seventy-four, one oh three one, right now, that's the director, the director can delegate that task. The library policy page has an electronic public request form, which the public is required to use. And so it's best practice, and you know, an individual board member does get a request. To forward that to the custodian, so we'll be aware of it, but it may not necessarily constitute a public records request under the statute. If they're required to submit it through a form and it be in writing. The public agency upon receipt of a request must grant or deny it within three working days. Um. You can request to examine a record as well, not just receive a copy. So a member of the public could request to come in and, you know, let's say you're in the county and you want to see a flat map. They could go in and take a look at it, take a photograph of it. That's just most, most of the time we see requests for copying because it's much more convenient. Um, an employee of the public agency can determine that a longer time is needed to locate or retrieve public records. And so under seventy-four, one oh three two, if that reasonable determination is made, then the agency would have up to ten days to. Provide the public records. Working days exclude weekends and holidays, so these are business days, working days. So if we receive a request at six PM and our custodian is not here, the day we had received that request would be the next working day. That's how you would calculate the time periods. If it needs to be converted, whatever the record we find, the custodian performs a search and they find a record and says. Uh, this needs to be converted into another format to deliver that electronically. Then the custodian can negotiate a mutually agreed-upon time with the requister to deliver that. And that can also be outside of the ten days. If no response is given. To the requister within the ten days, it's deemed denied, so it's important to. One, act within the first three working days, or two, determine there's a longer time needed to notify the requister. And then three, before the expiration of the ten days, say, hey, we need a little bit more time to convert the record, otherwise it's deemed denied. Any denial or partial denial will require a written notification. And that written notification should include that the attorney for the public agency reviewed the request, or that the agency had an opportunity. To consult with an attorney, and it has chosen not to do so. And it shall also indicate the statutory authority for the denial. And clearly indicate the person's right to appeal the denial or partial denial and the time periods for doing so, seventy-four, one oh three five. The public agency can charge a fee to deliver. A copies of a public records request, but we cannot charge a fee for the first two hours of labor or hundred pages of paper copies. There's a process that I consult quite often with the director on how to handle, you know, an IR estimate of how long it may take if it's a voluminous public records request. And it needs to be at the lowest hourly rate, at the lowest qualified person necessary to process it. And we can't bundle it together, it needs to be itemized. Um, at that point, the director could have a discussion with the requister to attempt to help them narrow their request. But the agency is prohibited from, you know, inquiring into the question related to why they want the records, their motivation for the records, how they're gonna use the records. Um, and so seventy-four, one oh two states that the, the agency can't scrutinize the requister's motivation, but we can make an inquiry. For AV and C, one, to verify the identity of the requister in accordance with seventy-four, one thirteen. Ensure the requested, uh, record or information will not be used for like a mailing list. And to protect personal information from disclosure under another law that's not really relevant here. Um, next is the most commonly used statutory authority for a denial of a public records request or a public library. So, um, if a member of the public makes a request and it's denied, more likely than not, it will contain. One of the following statutory authorities. And one would be requesting attorney-client privileged communications. That is seventy-four, one oh four, and that. Allows us to use any other state law, and the state law here would be nine, two oh three. An attorney can't be examined without their client's consent. Idaho Code three, two oh one five, the attorney must maintain and violate the confidence and at every peril to himself preserve the secrets of his client. And sometimes I cite Idaho Rule of Evidence five oh two related to, um, the privilege to refuse the disclosure of confidential communications. However, it's interesting that the Public Records Act allows us to use federal regulations but not state regulations. So it may not be a valid, uh, one to use, but it's not necessary because nine, two oh three and three, two oh one cover it. The second one would be patron identity, seventy-four, one oh eight three. And that one verbatim is the records of a library that, when examined alone or when examined with other public records. Would reveal the identity of the library patron checking out, requesting, or using an item from a library. There's no case, there's no appellate case law in this provision. And so if the request is gonna elicit, um, any type of record that could tie a material to a patron, it would likely be denied. Personnel records under seventy-four, one oh six, this is to maintain confidentiality of sensitive employee information. There is, um, quite a bit of non-appellate case law, the district courts are on Idaho on this one. Uh, mailing list, seventy-four, one twenty-one A, we don't see a lot of this, but we have seen some in the library and education sectors. Uh, because we have lots of lists of, of people that use our services. Um, this section related to mailing list doesn't apply to lists used to give notice required by a statute ordinance rule of law by CLN. So CLN is prohibited from using its records to send out required notices. And the last one to be aware of, I haven't seen it yet since I've been here, seventy-four, one oh eight five. Contributor material, so exempt is a material of a library, museum, or archive that has been contributed by a private person. To the extent of any limitation that is a condition of the contribution. You know, who knows what that really means? Uh, if we get a limitation on the condition of the contribution, we could look at it at that point and see if it's reasonable or not, it fits the spirit of the Public Records Act law. With that, I will yield my time unless there's any questions.
Class?
So, so back on the attorney-client privilege. It seems like you're kind of, you know, could be in a conflict. You're the attorney for the board. You're also the attorney for the library staff and the library.
In the extent that they're a constituent member of the district. I don't represent any individual in the library district in an individual capacity.
I, I understand that, but I'm saying if the library board is getting. Advice because maybe of a policy that. Maybe the staff or the. You know, the library entity is, doesn't, or is opposed to. Or I don't know if they're in a conflict with, uh, you know, personnel matter or something where the. Library board is getting advice, but you also have to give advice to. The staff. How do you resolve that, is, should there really be two attorneys, one for the library staff and one for the board? If, if there's a conflict, or do you, do you excuse yourself if there's a conflict or something?
Yeah, this will likely revolve around our professional ethics rules and guidance, so I have my own attorney with the bar I can call if I have questions about how to proceed ethically. But under IRPC Rule one point one three, and I think it's one point seven. It governs conflicts with current clients and also dealing with an organization as a client. And also a government organization which has even special, more complicated rules. Um, it's, for instance, you could have the president doing one thing, and the court's doing another, and the legislature doing another, and they're all arguing. Well, technically, your, your client is the United States government, but it's not, it's the state agency or a sub-agency. So we analyze conflicts as they arise, and then we would make the appropriate limited disclosure authorized by Rule one point six confidentiality. In order to just advise that we would have a conflict, we may not necessarily tell anyone why. But if, say, a staff member wants to sue the board, then I represent the board. So if I'm gonna have a conversation with the staff member, I have to say, I'm not your attorney or a district. I, you know, we're doing an investigation, whatever, so I mean, we analyze that, we make the disclosures. We don't talk to unrepresented persons, we bring, we know to represent it, there's a whole host of steps and guidance that we have. Before we get into a sticky situation like that. So, you know, that's one reason why we limit who we communicate with. And so we have a point of contact primarily through the chair, and then primarily through the director. So we have our point of contact through the board and the admin system. And typically, we can kind of flesh out if there's a conflict before we get too far down to have to flick out the whole thing. But it may be necessary.
Yeah.
Does that answer the question, because that's actually a really complicated area, as example.
All right, uh, are there any further questions, or do you have anything else for us?
No, thank you.
Okay, uh, well, then moving on to the next thing. Uh, we need to go into executive session. Uh, under Idaho Code seventy-four, two oh six, one F. You have a question on that?
Yeah.
Okay, Rusty, hang on.
I moved to go into executive session under Idaho Code seventy-four dash two zero six, one F, dedication.
Okay, uh, it has been moved to go into executive session under Idaho Code seventy-four dash two oh six, one F, let it get to. Uh, this is a roll call vote, trustee class?
Hi.
Okay, I'll send aside. Handi?
One way to say my name.
Okay, it is unanimous and we are now going to executive session, which means just for the board. So thank you, audience, for being so good about that. I think we have been out of executive session for a few minutes and we were waiting for the recording to start. So now we're on to item number fourteen, policy discussion, library cards for minors. Any questions, comments?
I was just going to ask, there's a couple of changes on this, ask the library director for clarification, what the green changes versus the lined out red is, you can just summarize.
Yes, thanks. So I, I just felt that with some of the feedback, my community and just staff. There was some confusion as to what that last sentence meant. To me, the last sentence beginning with nor can be used to access ebook streaming content or online databases was referring to CIN. Materials, these are shared materials that CLN doesn't have autonomy over, doesn't own on their own streaming content and ebooks and online databases are each kind of unique forms of e-resources. So I moved the two green words of their physical or electronic into the sentence that applies to the CIN. Just to make it a little bit clearer that the only thing that's actually happening in these cards is is limitations in regards to non-CLN materials. That's why I'm a reporter this evening, this afternoon. I just wanted to report to the board that there are, there are CLN autonomously owned ebooks and online databases. Again, I referred to them earlier today, so because those exist, those aren't being restricted to our CLN patrons, minors or otherwise. So I just want to clarify that in the, in the sort of innovation of this, this document. So the CLN is not restricting any of its CLN patrons from any CLN material. And then obviously, we know that the CIN has its own things happening in regards to their GPA, the current one and the one they're trying to change to. So that's been its own complications to that organization, which the CLN belongs. But as far as this policy is concerned, this policy only deals with, with CLN patrons. It only has governance over CLN patrons and CLN material, so that's what it's doing. There's limited access card for minors, which explains what they have access to with CLN material and saving the general access card. So they're not being restricted from electronic resources. That would be databases or ebooks that the CLN has autonomy over in its collection. But yes, they are being restricted from CIN or non-CLN libraries. That's pretty sure the board, under the circumstances, it's not necessarily the the only way it has to be, but, but it goes beyond CLN. So this is about CIN, that's why it's about CLN governing its own collection and its own minors. And I just tried to clarify that a little bit better in the wording.
I have a question. It sounded yesterday, I, I attended the CIN meeting. I don't know if you saw me, I was in the back, silent observer. And it sounded as if the CLN card, holders, minors that hold a CLN card, is to be able to go physically to a non-CLN library, a CIN library, a non-CLN, and it could check out material. That's what it sounded to me, that could be done. If I heard it correctly and understood, okay. So is that, is that what you heard? That's what I heard yesterday. And then to bring that up, because there's an easy way to modify, I think, this, this policy. Because in both of these two sentences, in A and D, it says it cannot be used to reserve or borrow physical or electronic materials. If you can, I was just going to say, we can change the, the online catalog cannot be used to reserve or borrow physical. But so is a, is a patron, a minor patron of the CLN with the new policy we have here, I guess from a digital standpoint, a software standpoint, can they walk into, let us say, Liberty Lake, Coeur d'Alene, wherever, some of the library and check out decent material? I thought I heard they could, if they physically went to that library. And if they can, then we need to just make, I think, a three-word, add one in here and take the word it out and change it to the online catalog. So, so it's a question and a suggested edit.
Oh, yeah, again, this policy was implemented, or this policy was established. And then it was, we were directed, the assistant director and I were directed to implement. And so that's the process we're in right now. So some of the questions can't be answered because I don't know what's capable, what the capabilities are with the system. But it, it seemed to me, and I was at the meeting, obviously, again, the idea is that a library, a, a minor patron walking into that library would be able to use that library with their part. Right? Because it's that library that's providing them the material.
Right.
Right? It's not, the concern with this policy is what CLN does with CLN material. Right? We don't, we don't have governance over Liberty Lake or any other, you know, Coeur d'Alene. We don't have any governance over them. And this is really what this comes down to, right? It, it's a consortium, it's a group of libraries getting together for whatever reasons. But they all have their own autonomous governance structure and directors, or whatever level they have at, at the admin team wise. So, yeah, and right now, unless I'm told by my IT or tech services that this is not possible, then the idea here was that a library card, page, a page, a minor page in a CLN can walk into Coeur d'Alene, for example, and that card will work in Coeur d'Alene. And then Coeur d'Alene provided them with a material, and this, this, all these policies work together, right? Our relocation, request for relocation material policy asked whether they found it in our library. It doesn't matter to us if they found it in a different library. That's not where we would have to concern ourselves. So if a minor received, is receiving material which their parent or whatever, you know, because this is not right or whatever, that's on the providing library. Not, it's not our responsibility, right? So, so yes, I think the forward answer is right now, as far as us trying to implement and look at all the different situations in the ILS, the answer would be yes.
I'm really surprised at that because when I teenagers, that age group, and we needed to get some other materials. I had to get a, I, I know I had a Liberty Lake library card and Spokane Valley library card. And that was the only way you could get the books out of those libraries, you had to get a card. But we're saying that someone could take a CLN card to Liberty Lake and they would honor it.
Yeah.
They should. That, that seems really bizarre to me that Liberty Lake, Washington would, would honor a CLN card. You, I, I could see, I mean, there's nothing stopping you, I suppose, from getting a Liberty Lake card, just like I used to have.
Hold on a second. So the audience needs to remember that this is a board meeting and we're the ones having discussion. If you guys want to discuss quietly, that's fine, but it shouldn't be interrupting our work up here.
So again, this is really the hard decision here. And it's, it really, in some senses, goes way beyond this policy. My understanding certainly from yesterday's meeting, on some of the stuff that is, is always new to me. But in the sharpie is odd and that is something I have to dive into. The answer is yes, but in the CIN, they treat all the cards in some sense as CIN cards. And then you get to sort of pick your home library, right? I think there's a difficulty with picking your home library if it's outside of the taxing district within which you're, you're So that's something we have to look at from the perspective of title thirty-three statutes regarding information of district libraries and public libraries. But I don't know, but to answer that question is, yeah, you, all the cards are in some sense CIN cards. And that does give the person the ability to walk into Coeur d'Alene, for example, even though they're in the CLN taxing district, right? And they get to use Coeur d'Alene public library with their part.
Trustee Hannah?
Okay, I understand. So if you have a C, if you have a minor has a card, a CIN card, that's CLN. They're a member of CLN, we'll call it our patron. They can use that in any CIN library physically if they go in there. And I understand that, it sounds like that, you could check a, they could check a book out as well. I guess our job is to make, take reasonable steps to prevent books being put out. If a minor uses their card, it's Coeur d'Alene's library, in my opinion. Coeur d'Alene library is the one giving them potentially a book we would normally have in our collection. So I'm going to go back to, and because it sounds as if the electronic capability is there now, it exists. You can actually walk in, a minor could, and go to Coeur d'Alene, go to any library that's not complying with the law to the same extent we are. And they can get that material out of there. So that's why I'm going back to what I'm suggesting is edit is to make it reflect reality. Is the online catalog, if I got it correctly, cannot be used to reserve or borrow physical electronic materials from other libraries? Because the way it's written here is it cannot be used to reserve or borrow. Well, you can use it to borrow. So I'm suggesting that we make a, cross out the word yet, but the online catalog for both A and B to reflect the electronic reality that a person can go in and do that. And I have no problem with that, meaning I don't care personally, no. The kid wants to go to Liberty Lake or they want to go to Coeur d'Alene library and their parents let them go there. Those libraries are giving those books out, whatever they happen to be, not us. And we have to live within, I assume somewhat, the constraints of the software. But I also know that policy should dictate procedure. So any case, I, I, I'll go back. I'm making, I'm trying to make a case to say, because, and that's why I had to ask the question. Because you can check a book out as a minor at a CIN library that's not a CLN library, then the wording in this policy, and I think I heard that come up in the, in the yesterday's meeting. So anyway, so I don't, if there's any, if I object to my suggested edit, but the online catalog cannot be used, if I, if I got this correctly, to reserve or borrow books from other libraries. But since you can walk in the door and get a book out, this doesn't allow that, the way it's written. My end of my speech.
And I'm confused, what, what does saying the online catalog cannot be used? Because if they can walk in with the card and walk up to the front desk and check it out, are they using the online catalog when they do that?
That's his question, I mean.
Well, I'm saying, what, what good does saying online catalog?
Because you can't order material.
Remotely from your home on the internet or something?
You can't, you, you're a card at home and have a book ordered from another library that's not the CLN and have it ordered in and waiting for a minor to pick it up here. That's my understanding of what we were doing.
I mean, yeah, I, I, neither solution might just be to move it or borrow. It, it cannot be used to reserve. When we say reserve in libraries, we're talking about, you know, putting it coming on hold, having it sent to you kind of thing. And this is where the, the, the language of the policy, you know, really kind of depends on the power of the ILS and, or to use words of the ILS, the kind of lingo that you use there. So yes, they can borrow physical. Well, yeah, so they can borrow physical items at CIN, they go in there physically to do so, right? What they can't do is reserve items. And then the reason why this is a complicated situation here is because it has to do with reserve and choosing the online catalog, right? Which is where they get the access to electronic resource. We're not trying to restrict them from borrowing material in those libraries. If their parents take them there, whatever, how they get there, maybe they can walk there, whatever. So we're not, we have no jurisdiction or no governance over these other libraries. And so we're not trying to mess with that at all. So, yeah, they can borrow those. But it might have to turn to my IT people and say, well, if it's a CLN minor with a CLN card and they're on the computer in Coeur d'Alene, can they access overdrive? Right? So this is where the implementation of this policy, you know, takes more time than just the creation of this policy. The words it has on the page and then the board votes on it. Then we have to implement it. That's why, that's why in this case, I have a couple of changes here. If I find out that there's potential within the ILS to be able to allow for, for certain things, then that changes the language, right? So to answer the question about can the minor go into Coeur d'Alene and borrow the physical item, yes. That's fine. But it still doesn't allow them to reserve an item on their laptop at home or using a public access catalog to reserve an item is what's being restricted. Because the, the how it's going to have to do with how home library is being handled in CIN. Because I'm assuming that if they put it on hold, it's going to be picked up at CLN. One of the CLN branches, but if they, this is why it's very confusing. Because if they're allowed to establish their home library, so they're a hidden, they're a hidden person, that is to say, that's the taxing district, but they set up their home library as Coeur d'Alene, because the CIN allowed that, then their reserve is going to be picked up. Right? So, I mean, it's, it's very challenging. Because I know what the board is hoping to accomplish with the establishment of this policy. But it's the, it's the actual implementation of the policy which drives the language and drives the capability of it. So it's really hard for me as the director to, so to wordsmith right here and hope to, you know, establish this and then turn to my, to my staff and have, have talking points with my staff, right? Which will be fluid and will change the nature of what can be accomplished in this policy. So I'm not really sure how to answer you other than to say, to that one particular question, yes. A, a, a CLN minor patron who goes to, to Coeur d'Alene and wants to borrow a book physically in that building can do so.
Right, trustee Amber setting?
I think if we just, I, I'd like to just get this moving to a vote. If we could just get rid of the words or borrow in each of those paragraphs, that would take care of the problem for now.
Oh, yeah. Right, just, just remove the words or borrow.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, that solves it?
Again, for now. For now.
Okay.
Because I, again, as far as actual implementation of the policy.
That's right.
And again, with CIN, we need to deal with what we need to deal with with the JPAs and stuff. There's so many factors involved here that I need to figure out at a practical procedural, you know, IT level. So for now, yes, and then if I'm directed to move forward with this policy as amended, then hopefully I find out more about what can be accomplished and be satisfied.
Okay, so we have consensus on just removing the words or borrow in both A and B. Yes, okay. Yes, so we have consensus, we'll remove the words or borrow in both A and B. Any other questions or comments?
I think a card can be used to borrow.
What? What's the question?
What was the edit exactly?
Uh, just removing the words or borrow. So that that sentence reads, it cannot be used to reserve physical or electronic materials from other libraries in the cooperative information.
Oh, yeah, okay, I'm, I'm good with it.
Okay, so it sounds like it's unanimous. And, trustee plus?
I move that we ask this finer card policy with the one revision of striking or borrow.
Actually, did you say as amended?
As amended.
It has the move to approve this library cards for minors policy as amended. All those in favor, say aye. Okay, it is unanimous, sound of library cards for minors policy is approved as amended. All right, so then we are on back to response of the comments. Uh, trustee Hannah?
I'll read my prepared comments. As this board is aware, and more and more Americans are becoming As this board is aware, and more and more Americans are becoming aware. There is a plethora of perverted authors, perverted publishers, and perverted marketing operations. Who relentlessly produce and promote smut in an attempt to hypersexualize children. Two particular targets this cabal of, um. To picture times this, oh, this cabal depends upon our taxpayer-funded libraries and schools to support their depravity. As a board member, I will do everything in my power to put an end to helping fund these purveyors of filth. For those thinking they will change my perspective. And make material harmful to minors available to minors, I say. I make no apologies for this board's great accomplishments over the past year and a half. I'm not certain I can think of a mission much more important than protecting children. We will continue working to make the lot, the community library work network great again. If parents want their children to have access to smut.
Uh, the audience will please be quiet.
If parents want their children to have access to smut, I suggest they pay for it. And visit Barnes and Noble or log onto Amazon. And if someone wishes instead to support the local economy, I'm sure they can find an adult bookstore between here and downtown Spokane. Oh, that's right. I'm guessing the minors will probably be prohibited from entering or making a purchase at one of the establishments. They probably can't buy cigarettes there either. Or have a drink.
Well, you know, you got that theme of throwing to your friend at lunch, Mary.
Okay, uh.
Fucking ridiculous, you guys are, you guys are violating.
Okay, please, the gentleman in the back, you need to stop, you need to stop or you'll be trespassed. What?
Thank you, I have one more sentence to read. Gee whiz, the infringements on children's touch and tush smell might seem to be trampled upon at every angle, so suck it up and deal with it.
Yeah, how about a lawsuit against you?
Okay.
For violating.
We will recess in five minutes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, it is five oh five and our recess is over. Uh, so we will go back to public comment. Trustee Amber Zetti?
In the last meeting last month. We had individuals that. Seem to be confused about who the legislators were and who the people that were implementing a legislation are. For risk of sounding a bit pedantic. We live in a representative government. Or we live under a representative government. Our state and federal constitutions are based on representation. Ben Franklin's great words, a republic, madam, if you can keep it. Well, I intend to keep it. And I know the rest of my fellow trustees do, but I think there's some confusion about. Who passed the law? Not that I'm trying to punt it off on our legislators, because frankly, I thank God every day that they had the courage to do that. House Bill seventeen was overwhelmingly approved, in case you all did not know.
Seven ten.
Oh, thank you, seven ten, overwhelmingly approved by an approximate two to one margin. That's close to seventy percent of both the House and the Senate down in Boise. They voted as majority, their constituents demanded to protect children. Now, it's interesting that the. Geographic area or taxing district of C L N. Actually covers all or parts of four legislative districts, two, three, four, and five. All twelve of those legislators, eight representatives and four senators unanimously voted yes on House, House Bill seven ten. And your departure doesn't mean that it's not true. Think about that.
I don't mean your time to idiot.
Unanimous, unanimous, our representatives voted unanimously. You gotta give that some thought. So our responsibilities as trustees is to comply with the law through policy. And through following the law duly voted on by the representatives of the people of Kootenay and Shoshone County. Were in fact following the will of the people because it is representative government. How do we know that? Well, guess what? All twelve of those representatives who voted unanimously were reelected in November. Every single one of them. That's how representative government works. By the grace of God. Because in God we trust. Thank you.
Trustee boss.
I just wanted to clarify that when I brought up at the last meeting that. We don't send our children to war. And we don't send her, want to put our children in a culture war. I guess it was a figure of speech about culture war, but we don't want to subject our children, our minors, to. Confusing ideas that will. Lead them astray to having a normal, standard. Time-tested way to. Have a family, have a life. And we don't send our children to war. It was pointed out to me that, well. You know, seventeen-year-olds when they. Or we can send seventeen-year-olds to in at the military, they can enlist. Well, you go look it up. Seventeen-year-olds, if they graduate from high school, which is usually the end of May, beginning of June, or middle of June. If they're still seventeen. They they can enlist in the military. But they're gonna have to go through basic training, which is like six or eight weeks for. Trustee Amber Zetti would know, but anyway, by the time they get to. Done with that and you get assigned to war, they're gonna be eighteen. So, and it's only a small percentage of those. Pretty much, uh. I think I remember how the rules go, but you have to be five by the time school starts. So that makes somebody whose birthday is in. June or uh, August fifteenth, uh. You know, they'd still be seventeen when they graduate from high school, but it's only a couple of months. So, no, we don't send our children to war. Maybe we send them to basic training, a few of them, but. Anyway, don't, don't try to nitpick over this. We don't want our. Miners getting exposed to. Ruinous concepts and ideas that will ruin their lives.
All right, um, and I had a response to a disruptive comment at our last meeting, uh, something to the effect that there's nothing wrong with Marxism. So Marxism is not just immoral, it's anti-moral. Morality and goodness are despised. Anything that discourages Marxism is to be destroyed. Family, especially traditional family, honesty, caring and compassion, liberty, purity and innocence, loyalty, godliness. Faith, religion and religious principles, other than Marxism itself, wherein government is their god and religion. Um, anything that promotes Marxism is prized, no matter how sadistic and evil. Lying, robbing, rape, murder, mostly peaceful protests that are extremely destructive and violent. Burning down cities. Uh, terrorism, pedophilia, destroying property and property rights, destroying children's. Uh, um, stability and health by giving them books that groom them for sexual perversion and exploitation. Gaslighting, mass propaganda, redefining words until they're practically meaningless, like banning book burners and gender. Trying to bring community institutions to the brink of destruction so they can blame people who believe in God's liberty. And continue to turn the next generations into mentally destabilized Marxist revolutionaries. Since sadistic and evil behavior is rewarded, it encourages psychopathy in the people and your deranged brutal leaders. Over one hundred million people were murdered in the twentieth century by their own Marxist-flavored governments. The U S S R, China, Cambodia, North Korea, North Vietnam, national social. National socialists, also known as Nazi Germany. Its basis is theft, forcibly taking from those who've earned it to give to those who have not. And instead of unalienable rights from our creator or even natural rights. Marxists get privileges granted by government, which are easily and frequently taken away by government. You don't have any rights, not even the right of being alive or keeping your organs for your own use. And once a Marxist government comes into being, it rewards those who championed it by killing them off to preserve its own power. Uh, a different topic that I have is that some say that's illegal to withhold these obscene materials for minors. It has been illegal for anyone to give these materials to minors since the early nineteen seventies. And prior to that, a perpetrator might have fared even worse at the hands of an irate father. We aren't restricting rights, we're stopping something that was already illegal. Um, so I guess everyone has shared a public comment. So if there's nothing else, we will go on to number sixteen, discussion of future agenda requests. Uh, trustee boss.
I think it's already on the list, but we need to complete the. The uh. Changes that we were proposing to the selection acquisition, material selection acquisition policy.
Yeah, I think that we agreed that we would. Get to that at some point, but it wasn't super specific on when we started.
Well, it's it's part of the changes that the director made. To uh. And that is the sole of. Materials that was in the packet.
Okay, um. I I would like to revisit that at some point, uh, unless we have consensus, so it might not be nice enough unless we can fit it in. Um. So.
I'd like to see it.
Okay, so we have two for, uh, two for doing it next month, um, I'm. Um, I don't know what like next month is gonna look like. I don't wanna try to squish one more thing in. Sounds like it fails consensus for next month, but it is on the list. Uh, anything else for future agenda request? Okay, then moving on to seventeen, set special on regular meeting dates, trustee boss.
I request a special meeting to discuss the. Material selection acquisition policy, uh, I'd like it to be next week. Maybe next Thursday. Or day. Maybe it could be a juror meeting.
Okay, uh, do we have consensus on that?
I'd be open to that. Yeah.
So I'm willing to.
Okay, I don't think I'm quite ready for it yet, but, um, trustee Anne.
Uh, no, I don't want one, and I don't, I don't, and I'm not voting yes, I'm voting no, but I think two persons can call a special meeting. As to when we scheduled for, I don't know how that works.
Okay, uh, so it sounds like it fails consensus as a, as board action. So anything else, or shall we go on to rise number eighteen?
Two, two trustees call for a special. Uh, meeting.
Yeah.
There's two trustees calling for a special.
I don't. Think that that's outside of this, I guess I think we've always done this by consensus.
So we.
So we do it now or soon as the meeting's over, send emails?
Uh, yeah.
The other trustees will, and we'll put in the request and we'll still have to do it.
Okay, I think that that would be done through the director, because it would violate open meetings law or it might potentially violate it if you were to send something out, so you would work.
Yes.
We do it right now.
Uh.
The question development policy of many libraries is really probably the most. Fundamental policy, because that's what libraries are, the collection of materials. Uh. Just based on my timeline and my ability to contribute, uh, you know. Contribute to the draft. Uh, I'd be more in favor of giving it a regular meeting. The next regular meeting, which is basically four weeks versus one week. Uh, we have a lot of H R things happening, positions and interviews that I have to be a part of. So I'm not just offering this. Because this is a very significant policy, uh, cause that basically speaks to the course of our, our goal is that's a collection of materials. Uh, I I would hesitate to to tackle so quickly, uh, within a week's time. Um, but I'd be happy to, uh. You know, do what I can to make sure it's not much. Uh, agenda.
Trustee boss.
I think the director just said one change in there, and that was you. And suggested that, um. Adding reference to. Any material violating, uh. Idaho law goes to the mature collections. I think that's all you had added. I was wanting to add some other things, so I don't think there's a lot of work for you. Uh, yeah, I I want to hash out what I, what. At least trustee Amber Zetti and I would like to add in addition to what you're adding, and it's part of the package of the. The changes that need to happen for the mature. Content collection, and we don't have that now. We need to get it wrapped up, and it should be done ASAP.
Yeah, i- if it's, if it's just about the the changes that I've made to it that are already put forward, then that's fine, I don't mean, but but if it's going to. Really talk more fundamentally about creating a collection policy, you know, in reference to some of the things talked about by yourself and. Trustee Amber Zetti. I I I can, I could come to a meeting next week. And listen to you all, actually, I just don't be able to contribute that much between now and then. From from the professional library perspective that I wanna be able to bring to you, that's all.
Okay, uh, so it doesn't sound like we have consensus on arranging that right now. So we. Uh, you you guys can figure that out and. Bring it back later, or we can try to do it in the March meeting. We've got the time to do it. Uh, trustee Amber Zetti?
I think if we. I think if we could get a commitment to have it on the March meeting, then I I I personally would then, um, not, um. Uh, push for a special, uh, meeting if we could be guaranteed that we're gonna talk about it in March.
Yeah, it looks like for the March meeting, we've got library services report, request for reconsideration of program and use of alcoholic district programs. It's three. Uh, potentially big thing when we. Director?
So yeah, the calendar, there'll be the, so like today, we had the facilities report. March is the program department. Or I think that's what they're referring to, and then I just have an abundance, like today I bundle policies and that related to facilities. So those policies are related to programming, there's the one about. Installation programs and alcohol use programs. You know, in our programs, but anyway, so, um, so again, if you're asking the director, uh, I don't think the March meeting is, uh, uh, it would be deonorous to, to, to make sure we can cover. Selection policy. Although my only concern was a week out is too much, too soon, uh, for me to contribute, uh, when I feel like I'll be shit.
Okay, yeah, I just didn't wanna have another situation where we were working on eight policies and two job descriptions, and it just. It was fairly confusing. So trustee boss.
Yeah, I think those policies you've listed right there are low, low priority, and they could go out another week. Or another, another month, um. This needs to get done, and I would rather do it now. And get it over with, so it's in, or this whole package that we've just dealt with. And I really don't wanna wait another month, but I. Would be willing to do it, but I I. Don't appreciate that it's, uh, on the list and we'll eventually get to it. Uh, we gotta have a commitment or we're gonna call a special meeting.
Right, uh, understandable, um. So barring some kind of thing like today, we had to add an executive session and a policy, uh. Then we should be able to, it sounds like we should be able to fit it into March. Okay, so moving on, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
It has been moved.
Okay, it has been moved to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Right, we are adjourned.